Okay, 6:10, we're going to go ahead and start the policy committee meeting. Go. Yeah, so, and that's not to bypass your.
No, no, you're fine. I gotta find out where I put it now. Go ahead.
No, I looked through what people wrote. It seems like everybody's all on board. The only thing I was kind of looking at was in Policy 2345, there was a, under number 10, add a subsection D, that opt-out forms might be in effect for material that requires prior notification. No presentation or discussion shall include opt-out material without prior parental notification. So, um, and I pulled it up, and it's, "Prior to his or her appearance or participation, the proposed speaker shall be given in writing and shall agree to abide by the following regulations."
So when she's reading off, and it says stakeholders, what does that say, stakeholders draft?
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-three forty-five.
Yeah, because I wanted to see what was sent out to everybody. Rosanna, I'm wondering if there's a way we can maybe clean up those folders? Because we get, I mean, when I look at twenty-three forty-five, there's like nine documents, and just trying to figure out what we're working off of is challenging, and I don't want to update something that's.
Yeah, because I can't find the one you're working off of or you're looking at.
Okay, it starts with stakeholder.
Okay, I see.
And then draft, in big letters.
Yep.
Okay, so this is what's sent out.
Oh, this one right here, right?
No.
Are you saying it's twenty-three forty-five? Oh, you're looking at the procedures.
Oh, at the P, I'm sorry. Okay, the P, yes. Because when, what, because the comment's under the policy. So I looked at the policy, and the policy's short and sweet, but the procedures have some depth to them. So it sounds like, so prior to the person's appearance or participation, they have to agree, no profanity, vulgarity, or lewd comment, no tobacco, alcohol, or drug use, and any member of the school administration or staff has the right. So I guess we could specify, but how would they know?
Like, how would the student know, or like?
No, how would the person, the proposed speaker, know that there is opt-out material without parental notification? I just, I don't know.
They wouldn't necessarily, but what we have been doing is after the one incident that happened where there was material, what we've said to everybody, so maybe this needs to be included. If there's any handouts, materials, even down to a worksheet, if there's anything that's going to be put in front of kids, in the sense of, you know, material, then that has to get approved by the board, so that still falls under our supplemental. So a guest speaker coming in would have to go over with the principal and get approval, and they have to go over their content, and we've been saying you should see a copy of the presentation. Like, it's like showing a movie that you haven't seen. That's been vetted, so that you know.
Stakeholder input from.
What's, you know, so, but if there's material attached to it, that's.
Oh, yeah, I got it.
If it's just a presentation, they have to approve that. Which means that they have to watch it.
Right.
It has to actually be seen before it hits the kids.
So then, um, all material needs to be pre-approved prior to.
Yeah, would go through the supplemental curriculum process prior to.
Okay.
And then, you know, all, it should be moved by principals prior to, yeah.
And probably be specific like that, like not just approved by the principal, but like viewed.
Right. Like, Nurse Judy is going to come in under the health classes for Timberlake High School, and she's going to do a CPR training with the health class, so, you know, it, there's not going to be. So that presentation, I mean, he has seen it because she's done it for, she's done it for staff. So that kind of a thing, but it's giving, it's, she's supposed to go through approval, it's not a given. But any, like, any sexually related, anything sexual in nature, gender, any of that, that has to be an opt-in from parents, so it's not an opt-out situation. And so you have to, parents have to give permission to participate, so that would not fall under this. You know, it would be, those kids would be removed from class, it's a separate, and parents have located. So that can't be an overall presentation unless there's an opt-in form attached to it to ensure that those controversial issues aren't coming up.
Okay, so, I don't know if you want to pull up the draft. Twenty-three forty-five, P, space hyphen S, speakers in the classroom, and at school functions. It's got the lines and everything on it? Because I'm assuming that's the draft that we're working on?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one right here.
Yeah.
How come?
Scroll down. Okay.
Yeah, the other one was a clean version for stakeholders, but this means you're working on.
Okay. So I.
You want the P.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good idea. Use that for.
Okay, if you scroll down to the bottom or the top of the second page.
Oh, no page number.
Yeah, that needs to be added in here, as, along with everything that goes in the footer. So if we add, "All materials used within a presentation shall be approved prior to any presentation." Does that make it clear that?
I would like to see it say something about viewing the presentation.
Okay.
Would you agree?
Okay, so help me with what it is.
Prior to any viewing, prior to any student viewing?
No, I feel like the principal should view it.
So you could just say.
Because otherwise they could say, "Yep, you're approved, I'm in a hurry today."
Presentation shall be viewed and approved.
I mean, it's the same concept of showing a YouTube video of something, and then there's a commercial that pops in, and you're like, "Oh, you should probably view it," and, you know, have that delayed start time so none of the commercials are popping in.
Right. So presentation shall be previewed.
By administration prior to approval.
So my question.
And then if you want to note about materials included, what we've talked about is, I mean, it falls under supplemental curriculum, so it would have to come to the board. I mean, a flyer, a pamphlet, all of that, if there's something, it would come to the board for approval because it's material.
Okay.
So any materials provided to students during.
A presentation would have to come to the supplemental curriculum committee for approval, or to the board for approval through that process.
Say that again, Jackie, any materials provided.
Provided to students during a presentation must go through the supplemental.
Must get approval by the board through the supplemental curriculum committee. Because I feel like in the one situation that happened, just viewing the presentation wouldn't necessarily have alerted the principal to it being a problem because it was more about the little booklet that was handed out. Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, I think it was kind of both, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The handouts were. But had anybody seen that handout, they would have said, "Nope."
Right.
A red flag.
So all presentations shall be previewed by administration prior to approval. Any materials provided to students during a presentation must be approved through the supplemental curriculum process prior to distribution to students.
If you take out F there, do you want to add to D and say previewed? Oh, never mind, you got it, never mind, I read the last one.
Okay, anything else? Do we think that helps with what the parents and staff have asked for? I'm glad to see parents who could. How about you guys, do you think anything else needs to be added?
Well, you know, that one parent asked, like, what defines sex education? Because rightfully, sex education can be extremely broad, but.
But that's a separate from what this is talking about, only because all sex ed discussions have to be parent-approved, it has to be an opt-in.
So the sex ed doesn't fall into the controversial topics?
I mean, I think it naturally does, but we have separated that out and said, through the health standards, any of those have to be opted for parents, so it's separate.
And, and all that is cited on the policies, right?
Yes, yeah.
So maybe we just, maybe it's just pointed out in the emails that.
That, yeah.
The definitions are cited on the policies, you can look them up.
Yeah, it's all, well, it's an all-state statute, too. So that's why it's separated, because the statute made distinction between, you know.
What we have tried to do, too, just to give you some history, when we first started, well, they've been doing it for a while, but when we, I first came on, we really just talked about, there were a lot of policies that kind of were intertwined, and so if we changed language on one, then you, there were twenty layers deep of different that you had to change. And so we really tried to make them isolated, so that if we made tweaks or whatever, it's just a one policy, and then let, like, let them all kind of be standalone. So this probably would, through that old model, be a little bit more integrated, but we, we were trying to just, let's be clear on this one, but if specific to sex ed, then we're clear on that one, and so there's no, so that it is a standalone, and we're not, we don't have conflicting policies because we forgot to make a change. Because that's some of the struggle we've found.
Well, in respect, though, to what this parent's asking, even when I read through Policy twenty-three forty, "Controversial Issues in Academic Freedom," on item number six, we just plop in, "Any planned sex education instruction for any planned, all parents or guardians shall complete the parental option, option form for sex education." And then we, the board directs that a philosophy of abstinence shall be part of, and the underlying principle in all sex education instruction. So when you flip over here to the form, I mean, nowhere are we identifying exactly what sex education is. And I realize that it's in statute.
And it's on the policy, but it's not on the one.
Is there, wait, like, have you read the statute? Is there wiggle room in it?
No, no.
No.
No, it's, it's very explicit. I would argue that we shouldn't be teaching any of it, period. Because the statute's very explicit to, we have to teach in, in sync with the household and the church.
Right.
That's a state policy?
How long is the statute?
Well, that's what the statute says.
Because then you could just put on the opt-out form.
And there's other.
Sex education includes.
References.
And reference the statute, and so you don't go into too much detail. Of course, the statute doesn't go into a lot of detail.
But we could, but I guess, Michelle, the title of this is parental option form for sex education.
Right.
So that's really the only places you're saying that we say it.
I was saying if we just put a blurb, like, right below there, "Sex education is," yada, yada, yada.
As defined by the Idaho State Statute, actually.
That's what the statute is, exactly.
Okay, so, I'm trying to find it in the code.
It's thirty-three sixteen oh eight. Where is that, thirty-three?
Oh, courses of instruction, there we go.
Sixteen oh ten is.
Sixteen oh nine, sex education defined.
What, sixteen oh eight?
Family life and sex education.
Okay, so they both are applicable.
Well, actually, it's a sex education defined. Sex education, for the purpose of this act, is defined.
There you go.
Study of the anatomy and physiology, physiology of human reproduction.
Drop that in.
And Lynn, did you see there's a separate policy entirely that, that covers sex education?
Yeah, that's, that twenty-three forty.
Twenty-three forty is controversial issues.
Okay, forty-five then, one of them. Uh, well, why is our Form twenty-three forty then, if twenty-three forty's?
Because twenty-three forty was specific to, we did the form.
Oh.
Under controversial issues in academic freedom, so I'm wondering if we blurred those lines.
Right. Well, yeah, we did, because it says for sex ed, yeah.
Yeah.
Here, that's why people were confusing that.
So we might have blurred it.
Yeah, because it's.
I have a little instruction.
Hold on, I'll tell you what it is.
I feel like we had a separate one.
Thirty-two eighty of ISBA's equal education.
No, there was one that we worked on, at least it had the language of the sex ed in it. And we put the, um.
But I think we, now that I'm thinking about it, Ramona, I think we collapsed it into controversial.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember doing that. That's, yeah, not good.
I can't find it, though.
I mean, I think it needs to stand by itself, I could have sworn it was.
I thought we did, too, that's why I said that.
It probably was twenty-three forty. I mean, that's what the form is. Trying to actually, I've got my head in pieces. I'm looking at old stuff really fast.
Okay, so if we have the parental option form for sex education, it's, if you want to put up twenty-three forty F parental option form, and then just state, "Sex education is defined as the study of the anatomy and physiology of human reproduction pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-three sixteen oh nine." And then we can add that into the policy. So for any planned sex education instructions.
ISBA, taken twenty-three twenty, two thousand twenty-two.
What's the title of twenty-three twenty for ISBA?
It's, hold on, let me go up here. Health Enhancement Education, twenty-three twenty ISBA.
So I think that kind of.
Yeah, ours is a private.
Yeah. Okay, so if you flip back over to Policy Draft twenty-three forty, "Controversial Issues." Is that twenty, okay, go to page three, bottom. Then if we put, "For any planned sex education instruction, all parents or guardians shall complete the parental option form for sex education, Policy twenty-three forty F. Sex education is defined as the study of anatomy and the physiology of human reproduction pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-three sixteen oh nine. The board directs that a philosophy of abstinence shall be a part of the underlying principle in all sex education instruction."
I think that's great, I just, I, for some reason, I feel like we had all of this in a separate policy, and somehow I think we collapsed it into this one.
Yeah, we did, because I mean.
But I can't find it anywhere, anywhere, old stuff, whatever draft we were working on. I felt like we pulled it out, and we wanted it to be separate.
Yeah, because we did, and we had all of those references to the statute and some other things on it.
I know what you're talking about, we never finished it. We started it with Chrissy, and it just kept getting backburnered, and backburnered, and backburnered by the past superintendent, because we weren't going to be touching that, so.
Where do you think it was?
I don't know, I thought I worked, we worked with you on something.
I feel like we pulled it back up at one point.
Okay.
Um.
But I don't know where it would have been.
I, I think you're right, I think that's exactly what happened. And then at one point, we started talking about it, and remember, we had the conversation about we have controversial issues, we're going to keep this one, you guys pulled up the example, and we started playing around with it, but I can't find it anywhere. So could it still be in Chrissy's files, and it just never got placed in board policy? Because it was Chrissy's the owner?
Maybe.
You can search for it.
Michelle, this is a side note, that one's six, we're missing an A.
Deduction, yeah, I was about to point that out.
Can't stop staring at it.
Thank you.
So this is a bit nitpicky, but is that definition broad enough? The study of the anatomy and physiology of human reproduction? What if some teacher is like, "No, I'm teaching the anatomy and physiology of monkey reproduction"? Like, that's also something that I would want to be notified about.
That would be probably like a science.
Yeah.
Thing, you know?
Like, I feel like there'd have to be some kind of bad faith involved for somebody to actually do this, but.
I agree.
I feel like it also, I mean, they have their standards, so if it's not a standard, they really don't have time to do what I like to do, because they have to tie it back to a standard.
Okay, so they just don't, it's just not within the, the curriculum that they would be anywhere near?
I don't know, you'd probably have to look at the curriculum and see what it was teaching? You know, and depending on what grade level they were in, you know.
Yeah, because the standards are different for grade.
Yeah.
But you have several of the new science materials we're looking at.
I don't right now, I gave them all back, but I did just get an email about the science curriculum.
From?
Yeah.
From the ALA curriculum?
Yes, from the ALA curriculum, and actually, I'll talk to you about that after that, because it's off-topic. I think I missed a meeting, that's why I wasn't able to pick up some stuff.
Oh, I asked them if you want some, all over there.
Looks like a lot, I'll take it all.
Well, maybe we just need to. Come up with a policy, I just don't know what.
So the question really is, is do we feel like controversial issues, do we integrate and have sex ed be a part of that, because we have the opt-in form attached to it? Or do we separate it out and say controversial issues are specific to more maybe, you know.
Political.
Political, and then we have a separate, what did you call the title for my ISBA, Rosanna?
It, Health Enhancement Education.
What's that policy number?
Twenty-three twenty for ISBA.
Ours is driver's training.
I say that.
Do you guys feel like it could be?
I think sex, I think it's covered, in my opinion, it is a controversial issue.
Well, I think we need to keep it right here.
Yeah.
Until we can resolve that, and then, because I don't want to go on this rabbit trail looking for that at this moment. We need to find it.
Do you put that language that we have in that policy that we can't find right now? Because we also talked about then doing that as a resolution, instead of.
Well, if there's a policy, maybe we can look at it and see where it goes. Doesn't mean we have to adopt it.
Can you download the, while we search through Chrissy's stuff, will you download the twenty-three twenty so that we can look at that, too, please?
Sure.
But I think for the, for the sake of being forward movement, let's take these four, if we all think that they're good to go, and then we can.
There's one more case of deduction, set of education, at the bottom of those, it's right above the prior one.
I'm just, how, okay. Nice.
So it's in six.
I grabbed it.
Oh, you got it, all right, cool.
Um, the only thing about, like, what you were saying, moving forward with these, you mean, like, sending them to the board? But you're talking about maybe finding this other sex ed one and doing it separate? Because then that might mess this one up, and we might have to change this one, if this one talks about sex ed, and then we later do a different sex ed policy.
You can cover, there's nothing wrong with overlap.
I would think that there would be reference to the controversial policy, to where, I mean, if we're going to elaborate on sex education, what can and can't, then maybe we would need to state, you know, I don't know that it would cause the, the legal definition to be altered in any way, that policy. So I think just at least giving kind of an intro, this is where we're going. We're not going too far from here, here we are.
It should, it's a plan, it should only support.
Correct. So I think we should be fine, and at least it's getting updated, and we're not going to have problems anymore with guest speakers.
Yeah, and this will fall under one of the policies that you and I talked about this, is at the very beginning of the year, we have a checklist of policies that teachers have to go over and sign off that they have read, preschools have gone up, like, the movie policy. I mean, there's, there's probably twenty, twenty-four that we kind of spotlighted of. We need to make sure everybody understands this, and you are really clear on what the process is. This would, this is one of them.
I have two thoughts about it.
Okay.
One, I think if we're doing this sort of semi-combo on this one, I think on that form, if there's just that one form that says specifically sex education, we might want to have a second form that just says, like, controversial topics, so that parents' red flags about sex education aren't going up if it's not actually a sex education talk, if it's just a controversial issues, because this form says sex education, or is there a second form that I?
Right, is there a form to opt-out of controversial issues?
Actually, there isn't. It says, "The teacher shall notify the parent, parents or guardians when controversial issues may be discussed. After receiving notice of the controversial issue, parents may have their child excused, and the teacher will provide an alternative assignment. Students may also be excused from controversial issues." Oh, "Students may also request to be excused from controversial issues. If the student is unable to verbally articulate this, the student may make this request in writing." So it sounds like we're just expecting the parent to send a note to class saying, "Please don't let my kid out in."
Or the kid can say, "I'm not comfortable with this."
Right.
Do we want them to just have a form, though?
Right.
You could copy the one that we have for novels, because that's the same concept.
So in SEL, what, there's an opt-in, opt-out form for?
There are certain programs that it, like, and there are certain novels where it's a complete opt-in, so it, yes, it's controversial, but that particular program we have deemed as, to do this part of it, you have to have an opt-in form, so we also have that piece as well. So our councils are using second step, and if they do any of the personal safety, that entire part of it has to be an opt-in for parents. It can't be done without parent permission.
So could we just duplicate this form, then, just have a second form that says parental option?
To opt-out of controversial issues.
So there's sex ed, opt-out, and then the controversial issues?
I would think so, that we can say, I, I mean, request that my child be removed from the presentation.
So would you be comfortable, is, this one is, I can make a copy and do it right now.
Okay.
We're going to say this is F1, and the other one's going to be F2.
That'd be perfect.
And we'll just put it in there, and I can make it really fast, and then.
And then we'll just update the policy to clarify, F1's for whatever, and F2's for the other.
Yeah.
Okay, I just messed up the. And then my second thought is.
That should be F2.
A question for everyone, I guess.
This one is still.
For that part of the controversial issues policy, where there's the blurb about sex ed, where the code is now put in there.
Yeah.
Is that meant to be the, all the protection we get as far as, like, ensuring, like, that parents feel comfortable that they're not going to be talking about pronouns and gender identity and all that, or is that going to be covered in a separate policy?
That's a separate policy.
That I think is a separate policy.
Okay, so this is just a little, like you were saying, a hint at something, and then there will be this separate policy that. Okay, so this is just a little, like you were saying, a hint at something, and then there will be this separate policy that will.
Yeah, there's a, what is it called? Sexual.
So this, I think, was that policy, now that I read through even everything we lined out and it did just sort of.
Did we just combine it?
It just melded into this controversial issue thing. 'Cause if you go through and read, there's a lot of, and it was the one that had the eighties language about the AIDS and the birth control and all that. And I mean, even way back when, 'cause I remember we had, Lisa go ask all the principals, you know, are you teaching abortion? Are you teaching, you know, 'cause we were trying to see what was actually going on. Um, and they say they weren't teaching a lot of these things, so it's like, well, then, they're not part of. So it did meld all into one, so, um, that's why the form has the name that it has, because that's probably what we started with. And then what you were saying, who were you saying about the, I was sort of reading.
She was talking pronouns.
The form, yeah.
You have the.
So here's the thing, if we make a form for controversial issues, what is that? What is a controversial issue?
Yeah, 'cause in the sex ed one, we actually define it.
You know, 'cause we took all that out of here.
And it's really dynamic, right? What's controversial changes?
Right. You know, and how, and then that means we would have to define what is controversial, you know?
Is it not defined right now in our policy, in this new one that twenty-three forty or whatever we're working on?
Uh, I don't think there's an actual definition, um.
I think because it's ambiguous.
Yeah.
Do we need to define it? I mean, obviously it would be nice to, but controversial issues, I think, is something that adults will understand. And I'm afraid any definition that we give will become outdated and then could be used against.
Yeah.
Right, and then you're just gonna go more and more and more and more, and, you know, I think, like you're saying, uh, I would hope that people, I mean, whatever the thing of the day is, you know.
Right.
Controversial issue. I guess in, in my brain, just always trying to maintain the focus of education, that's it. Reading, writing, or if the tech.
So you could define it, the subjects outside of core subject.
The hard part about that is, so what's outside of core specific to, I mean,
That's true, good point.
Juniors have to take a civics class, so you have to talk about current political issues.
Right.
I mean, you can't get away from that. The idea is that you're talking about what you see on the news or what, you know.
Yeah, you, you, yeah.
And then you're, 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 if kid, you're bringing up both sides, if this is what, I mean, that's kind of what that, but they have, they have to understand how the government works and.
True.
Yeah, it is a hard thing, like you're saying, I mean, there has to be a certain.
And there's no, um, there's loopholes everywhere. I get paid to find them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if you pull up, I did an F2 form, if you just go into our board and our actual board policy drive, um, Rosanna, I, uh, do you want me to override you? I don't know.
I'll just start over.
I just did a twenty-three forty F2.
I see that.
We're, 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 we're just gonna change it.
Yeah, like, that is very sensible and clean.
And I can't put, I mean, I could say controversial, but I'm like, this subject, 'cause it's subject to the science, it could be social studies, it could be, it could be health specific to, I don't know. Yeah.
Do we need to put on the, this form like, I'm, this might just be so much, but I'm just thinking for organization's sake, like, teacher, and then like line where the name could go and the date of the issue or whatever, just so it's like, this was the opt-out form for this.
Oh, yeah, identifying the subject.
Right, so it's not just like a forever or something, I don't know.
Yeah, um.
There would probably have to be a few of them, 'cause they're all gonna have, you know, when you hit high school or junior or middle school, you're gonna have not ACL teacher, but, yeah, I guess it would be similar to the, uh, novel form that we created.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So this is what I put in there, um, and they have to sign and date it, so here's the teacher and the opt-out title, like, what are you opting out of, or? I don't wanna put subject, because then that's really vague, like, I, what are you specifically? What has, what has been disclosed to you that, that they're gonna, like, we're gonna be doing, um, Hamperhead's Tale, that's one we came up with. That's not a great example, but I know that was one of the books that we were like, oh, there has to be an opt-in for it, so. Um, but then you're putting whatever that title, or I could put title slash subject or slash activity or.
Yeah. And I mean, even some put activity, some, uh.
Oh, yeah, I would do activity. Title and slash activity, maybe.
I'll work on this, I promise.
You just have to take your line a little bit shorter.
Yeah, delete some of the line.
What?
It's not one of the works, though.
Yeah, Google. I hate Google Docs.
The real-time collaboration is great, the rest of it is questionable.
True, true, true. But Sherpoint, you can do it too.
Yeah.
It goes down, written by developers for developers, the whole thing, from the inception of the search engine. It's like developer.
Do you think that's okay? And then they already have to date and sign and date it to you know when it's.
What it was ready to.
So then the next question is, is attached to this, do you feel like this one needs to go out to parents for approval, or do you feel like it's okay? 'Cause it's pretty much what was approved before?
I think it's fine. I don't think it needs to go back out for approval. Sorry, able to move on?
What's the bottom of the form look like? Oh, okay.
Bear, sign and date it. So, Rosanna, when you do twenty-three forty, you just have to remember that there's F1 and F2. When we bring to the board.
Public comment. Really? I thought we already did that.
Yeah.
That was brought to the board. Why is that still not, unapproved?
Which one, what?
I'm, I'm now on the January twenty-twenty-three month at a glance. Um, the second one's public comment. I thought we had already addressed that at the board meeting and approved the changes on public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, uh-huh.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's done. That's, yeah, that's for January fourth, so we need to do that.
Okay. All right, so.
Now we're down to.
Policy regarding SO slash G. Is this the title for the policy?
Is this the actual title from ISBA, Rosanna?
That's what I'm looking up right now.
It looks like it's how it is.
It says students, um, but then it should say gender identity and sexual orientation underneath it.
Gender identity and sexual orientation.
Okay, so this, all right. Okay.
So did you, you guys discuss this at the last policy meeting?
No.
Okay, this is the first.
Rosanna, is there any way to print a copy of this?
Yes, ma'am, I'm doing that right now.
Without you ID.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm so slow on draw.
You're fine.
So is this from ISBA?
No.
This is us?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ISBA is.
Yeah, we just took it and sort of gave some definitions.
Just wanted to let you. Okay.
That's all we did.
I think this is kind of a confirmation for a few sources.
Really? You actually found this someplace?
Um, not like this. And I think we took.
I understand.
But I don't think this included, uh, any of that example you said.
From Ohio?
Mm-hmm. Oops, my present. Right.
Is that School District of Ohio?
No, that was from the state, that's a little, that's a little.
Yeah, 'cause it's from a state board.
Well, yeah. Yeah, it would need to be reworded. I mean, it, I think it could be at a higher thought process or, um, it is, makes a lot of sense though. I mean, it is definitely a good springboard, um.
Where's Idaho sitting on the bills and the ACLU lawsuit?
I have a copy of it, if you want me to send it to you.
Oh, actually, that's right, yes.
Okay.
And then there's two recent court decisions that will land in this favor.
Yeah, there's one in Florida recently that.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're actually going to, uh, board, um, several board members, and we're starting to go to, uh, kind of, you know, um, the bill that will kind of go over what some of the new pitches, but I'm gonna go to a law conference and be full specific to just current case law around all this, so I'm super interested to see what comes from that. I'm gonna take Coopisa, and they give us a binder, um, so I think that will be super helpful.
I'm gonna go to that. Oh, I missed those conferences.
If you're with me, I think I'm home on myself right now.
Don't really wanna go to that.
But it might be more, oh, 'cause you don't get to go to the other one, huh?
Which other one?
The one that you and the boys, or you get to go to that one with Lisa?
Yeah, I am gonna go to that.
So it, it might be a duplicate.
Maybe.
So there's a thirty-two eighty-one, one pager, and then there's another thirty-two eighty-one.
Multi-pager?
Multi-pager. Are these just both drafts that we're looking at?
This one, this multi-pager is ISBA.
I mean, what is the, what are we trying to prove by giving all of these definitions?
I think we're trying to outline what's not supposed to be talked about.
Right.
So what are, what are the teachers not educating on? This is what they're not educating on?
Yeah, so to me, by defining all these things, it's almost like we, well, we are, we're saying these things are true and real and.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
They, you know, so it's like, I don't know exactly what the.
Seems like you're giving confirmation is what you're feeling like.
Well, you are, because you're giving it a definition, so we now have sort of blurred that line, you know, this is all my opinion, but we've sort of blurred, in doing so, we blur the line between education and sex and mental health. This belongs in the parent, in the doctor office, or wherever they're going with it. In my opinion, we don't, it should just be, we don't do this. If you're biologically born, identified as male, that's what you are, you go with the male stuff. And if you're biologically identified at birth as female, that's where you go there. You know, that our focus is, you know, education, reading, writing, and arithmetic. If these things come up, then it all needs to be handed over to the parent, because, I mean, we can do whatever, it can go to the board, the board can make the decision, but, um, I'm just thinking that by identifying it and by even having.
I, I see what you're saying. I think we can craft the definition so that it's not affirmatory, though, by saying something like gender identity is the idea that blah, 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 or is an idea, or some language like that, so that you're not affirming it, affirming it with the definition.
Or some people believe that.
Right, or some people believe, yeah. 'Cause I, I, I do think it's the case that if we're gonna say we're not gonna talk about it in the district, we need to say what it is. Even though like, I don't know, I don't like looking at such definitions either.
Right. I totally see what you're saying also, I agree with you. And then I also see Nate's point and agree with that, like, as a parent who went to the principal and asked them about all my kids' teachers, are they gonna talk, like,
Yeah, right.
To get reassurance about these specific things, that that wasn't gonna be talked about, having a policy where it does at least identify that these things are not gonna be talked about, I think will be comforting to parents to know that that's not good.
Right, yeah, I get that. I just don't know if policy's the place to put it, or resolution's the place to put it. Policy makes it, I mean, any board can come later, whenever, and, you know, throw it all out and write something totally different. But, um, policy does become sort of this legal binding document, right? Resolution can say the same thing, because what that is, is the agreement that this is, and that is the quote law, so to speak, under this board, with the agreement of the district, that we will not do these things. That this is our focus. So, um, but we can craft something, bring it to the board, and the board can have the, I, I guess I'm just putting a little caution out there that, you know, we could policy ourselves into a corner to, to where we might, you know, create.
Maybe resolution is better, what do you guys?
More issues than we need, but, yeah, I don't know either. And I don't know what the board would wanna do, and I know that the community, the parents, everybody wants, um, I mean, something I'm writing, I was just questioning the specificity of the language of the policy, you know? So, I don't know, you guys did a lot of work on it, I guess, so we can. So, I don't know. You guys did a lot of work on it, I guess, so we can pin me down it, but that would just be my...
Well, and is this the one that, um, Lisa's working on with that attorney on getting?
The attorney didn't...
Yeah, came back and said, yeah, I can't help. Yeah.
Really?
So we're essentially starting from scratch.
Everybody, and that's what I'm saying, everybody's so afraid to...
So a resolution would clarify any ambiguous...
Like we did with the CRP.
Right.
We did the same thing and did a line by line with the statutes, say what the community says, what, you know...
Idaho doesn't have any statutes, do they, right now? What's Idaho law on all this? I know the transgender sports...
Everything would be, um... I don't think that there's any new legislation that says this has to be, um, but I think ISBA would tell you, if you look at their policy, based on case law, and they reference...
Everybody...
They reference the same, I mean, they would say it's a Title IX issue.
Right, and Title IX makes a complete distinction between biologically male and biologically female, so that's another lawsuit.
But the, so, so, but the, was it, the Ninth Court of Appeals just were, just went in favor of biological sex on that, doesn't discriminate?
But as far as a statute, there isn't one, to my knowledge, in existence right now that says something. They would say this was, this is a, it's an equal act, it's a Title IX situation.
Yeah.
And it's discriminatory to, you know, that's what they, that's, and then that's what they even cite. But as far as, if you look at reference of codes, it's just our own policies. They don't have a statute that says this is what you do.
There's nothing to say anything about what a district must do.
Yeah.
It all came about because the current federal administration, um, updated its recommendations to Title IX.
We should look at Saint Johns County School Board's policy then.
Yeah.
'Cause they won the Eleventh Court of Appeals.
Say it again.
Saint Johns County School Board in Florida.
Do you know what policy it is?
Uh, I don't know. Doesn't say. It just talks about how they... Maybe you should just look at, um...
I'm looking at their district website.
Separating school bathrooms, just, I would do a search on that.
Yeah, was it just a school bathroom policy?
District policies. Did you find it?
Looking for the policy.
Not yet.
Um... Alright, just...
It's right here, um...
Okay, so that didn't pass.
I don't know though.
Do you, what was it called, it say?
I don't know.
It just, they titled it the bathroom policy, but they don't put a code to it at all.
Yeah, it says the court ruled that a school board's policy of separating school bathrooms based upon biological sex does not violate either the Constitution or federal civil rights. Yeah, statutory scheme and purpose of Title IX, along with the vast majority of dictionary definitions at that time clearly define sex based on biology. Yeah, and this was the same thing that, um, I was saying about Title IX, that it's been the argument, is that it clearly makes a biological distinction, because if it didn't, how could you discriminate?
Right. Well, and, I mean, as far as, if you looked at policy thirty-two eighty, um, our policy, that's about discriminatory behavior.
Right.
Um... So in that... Yeah, they're citing, um, US Code sixteen eighty-one and eighty-two, seven ninety-four, equal access, um... But there's no, there's no...
Public schools, I guess.
There's no Idaho statute that...
Well, because this policy was updated in twenty twenty-one, we added the language, um, educational opportunities, um, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation. That was in July of twenty-one. So, and in thirty, the, the proposed policy that was handed down by ISBA on this thirty-two eighty-one, addresses, I mean, it's gender identity and sexual orientation, definitions, school facilities, school activities, school trips, school records and privacy, change of official school records, confidentiality, training, dress codes, school dances, safe environment. So, I mean, it's, the policy is governed, or this policy is written to basically state, the definitions are there, because this is how we're going to treat all these definitions within these different subcategories.
And this is how you're expected to respond.
Right. And so, we're not... We're not wanting to go there, but I don't know how we...
Get rid of that little one percent of our budget that keeps a stranglehold to these people, that keeps telling us what to do with our kids. It's one percent of the budget.
That's true.
Sorry, we're not mad at anybody. I just get mad at the idea of the thing. I just wanna teach kids to be able to read and hold a job. I mean, a- as business owners, some of the resumes I get is really, really sad from young people.
Oh, yeah.
Sad. They just, and they have degrees and high school diplomas and...
'Cause time gets wasted on other stuff.
This, this, yeah. Yeah, I think that, um, even if you go to, uh, the Heritage Foundation, it cites all of the, um, all of the different suits and the, you know, the whole argument over sex, the word, you know, what is sex? Not the act of it, but the biological meaning, um, and they all win based upon, you know, just that. I, I really think that when the federal government issued, um, from the OCR, you know, I don't know if it was, uh... Uh, what do they call them, dear letters? I can't remember. I don't know if it was that or what it was. Everybody just sort of freaked out and, well, they threatened to...
Oh, they...
Take away the federal...
Free and reduce lunch, right?
Well, yeah, and anybody that took, you know, federal funds for anything, but that was part of it, was the free and reduce, uh, lunch, um... I was trying to see if any of these, uh, findings actually mentioned the, um...
Policy.
The policy, yeah.
I can't find it. Nobody, I think they pulled it down on purpose.
Some other policies page, may I ask you?
Yeah, I can't find it.
What's the website there, Nate?
Saintjohns.k twelve dot FL dot US slash policies slash... Again?
I got it.
Probably reach out to an admin and get it.
And what?
Reach out to an admin and get it. Ask them for it.
Yeah, they just keep referencing it, but, I mean, somebody had to submit it as in the, uh, case.
Yeah, that's right. It should be part of the case.
It'd be, yeah, somewhere. Sheldon's, where I'm thinking of, I can't think of a discovery.
Well, no, that just said something to you. Can you look at that, please?
Yes. Okay. Mm-hmm.
And let me know if you, you can see it.
Okay. Oh, sure, I'll do some of those, uh...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think I have this already.
Oh, you do?
But, yep, yep, mhm. Uh... Let me, it's trying to open as my other...
Code of Conduct has phone numbers for all their departments? They probably have a full inbox right now.
Well, I would think if we're not going to articulate, uh, gender identity or sexual orientation, we need to keep that language out of every single policy. Because, I mean, just saying sex is the old standard, and everybody knows what that means, so... Because the prior administration had us start putting that into our policies, we need to take it all back out.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause if we don't, I think we could create a problem...
Right.
By not articulating what it is that we're saying.
Well, we can articulate it, that's fine, if you feel like we need to, if you feel like we should do that.
I don't, I don't want to have to do that.
Yeah.
If we're just going to be like, okay, it's out there, but it's not here. This is not something we're, um, taking to the forefront and doing what other districts are doing. We're going back to the basics of education. And that can be dealt with at home or somewhere else. But I don't, I don't know.
The only other thing you could write is just that, I mean, some of these topics you can, I mean, 'cause it's... You know, it's developmental, and it's developmental health, and it's, you know, students' body, I mean, any of those topics, I'm just thinking of what some of the health standards say. You could just write something and just, then it's, all of this is an off-in situation for parents. And so then you're listing what some of those health standards just include, and that's the policy. So instead of doing from the negative and you can't teach these things, it's, these are the things that we are required to teach.
Anything outside of this.
And but, but even, but even that, we've said is an off-in situation. You know, like in fifth grade, they show the video, and it's a growth and development video, but it's still an off-in situation. So we could list it from the positive, but these are the things that we do. And then that, that's a pretty, you know, my optic scope of that, 'cause it's, this is what, this is what sex ed looks like in Lakeland. 'Cause we have our standards and we have what we do already. You know?
Oops.
And it's an off-in situation. We could write that out.
By not addressing it also allows for loopholes.
Right.
That's... And not to say that probably Lakeland probably is one of the, but you have nefarious teachers out there. I don't think Lakeland has nefarious teachers, I don't know. 'Cause I have, I've only been at the elementary school level. Um, but for somebody that has changed curriculum, language, to meet state law, to get something purchased and get something pushed through, I've played the game of semantics.
Right.
I know what nefarious people will do. I know, and I know what teachers and admins and other people in the arena are saying to me when I go to market. They'll be like, we have to relabel this. Not a problem. It's a semantics game.
Just call it something else, yeah.
Yeah, change it up and slip it in, and it slips in, and that's the problem.
Right. It's true.
Um...
Like, what does it say if, to your, like, you're saying, these are the things that are allowed. What are, what does it say specifically? Because that's where people will say, if it says, we only talk about biological sex, well, then you would have, that must obviously mean this, because you'd have to talk about this if you were talking about biological sex, you know? I'm just, to your point, and I've seen this in other districts also, you know, where they're like, no political posters are allowed in classrooms. Oh, but these ones are, because they're not political, this is human rights, you know, things like that. The semantics game that does get played. So I see your point. 'Cause it would make it easier, but I see your point, 'cause people can be hard.
Oh, lips of TikTok just showed you.
With everything that we have approved, I mean, I just, you know, like, everything that we're looking at adopting, it's gonna be read, so I don't, I feel like we're trying to do...
It's conversations. That's what this policy will guard against, is conversations in the classroom.
Right.
Right. It's not about materials, it's not about resources. It's about me as a teacher that has an agenda, and I start slipping in pronouns or...
Even not just the teacher, you know, it could be...
A student.
Yeah, or admin somewhere or something.
It could be...
You're not gonna stop that if a student is going to say something. I mean, what the teacher's response is going to be if a student says something, you're gonna have five, seven, eight-year-olds saying stuff that, you know, they've heard.
True, but you just...
And the teacher just has to shut it down.
But what if the teacher, see, that's what I'm saying, is that...
But if the teacher doesn't shut it down, or...
Well, I guess...
And if there's no policy, the students are not gonna know to say something, right?
The students don't read these policies, right? Like, what student reads school district policies?
No, 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 but what I'm saying is that I think like, well, it's true, they don't.
I mean, kids are gonna hear something and they say something. I mean, they tell all kinds of stuff about pockets in their house, you know?
Right. Kids are gonna hear all kinds of things and they'll, they'll probably go to school about it.
They'll say anything random, and so our response when teachers have asked is, your response is, oh, that's a, you know, it's the, you know, the birds and the bees. How did my mommy get pregnant? My mommy has, you know, a baby in her belly. How'd that happen? And it's just the same, the age of what we say and the adage, like, oh, that's a great conversation that you need to talk to mom and dad about.
You also have a policy about them. And you have a policy that explicitly states what teachers can teach around that, right?
Around...
Like sex ed, the likes...
I mean, that's what we're...
Yeah.
But when you're pushing on up to the middle, senior high, that is where they actually do look through our policies. 'Cause you wouldn't believe some emails I've gotten.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. From who?
The juniors and seniors for sure.
The students, the students.
Or the students.
Yeah, the students.
Oh, yeah. Interesting, that like, never would've happened.
I know, when I was a kid, like, I'd never...
Wouldn't happen if I was there.
No, they looked at, the dress, the dress code is a perfect example. We got a lot of input from students. I think parents asked, and then there were some things that instead of having...
So, so that's, that's why I'm saying that, that's why I think we should, there should be something of a policy of a, we are not going to address this at Lakeland. This is a issue that is...
This is a variant issue at home.
This is a parent guardian issue at home. That way, when parents read it, they're gonna say to their kid, hey, because that's what I would do, that's what I do with my child, if anybody talks about X, Y, Z.
I just think, I just think it's important that, I don't know, I just need to do a proper policy. I know we could have some...
I just, it's like, ah, it's pretty aggressive wording?
If we're, if there's something specific to the sex conversation, that there is clarity about, there is, this is all an off-in situation, specific to some of these top, you know, so parents understand that we do also have that barrier as well. It's another layer of protection.
Has there been a ruling on this? The, uh, IO, the...
The Ohio? I think they did finally pass it, and finally, Shane was his name. Uh, then there was, you know, the rebuttal from the other education department of the state, I forget which was it. Yeah.
'Cause just reading this, it's a very clear policy?
It is.
Yeah.
Well, it's a resolution.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And actually, that's probably, since this is all such ambiguous terms, and it just kinda is all... And actually, that's probably, since this is all such ambiguous terms, and it just kinda is all just gender dysphoria, which is in the DSM.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It has like terrible statistics associated with it, like, really bad.
What does?
Uh, di- uh, gender dysphoria, it's like equivalent to, anyway.
Well, that, and, you know, if it's.
They're really bad associated health outcomes.
Oh, it's, it's, I used to counsel transgenders back in the day, it's, it's a rough life. It's a really rough life.
So the resolution passed, uh, December thirteenth, ten to seven, and one absentee, or abstention.
And this was the state, right?
Ohio Board of Education.
Somebody needs to write, roll out the board, get him on board of this lawsuit.
So the Board of Ed. Who's asked them?
Our new, good state AG, unlike the Dufus before him, 'cause there's twenty-one other state attorneys that are filing a lawsuit against the feds.
Right. Yeah, we're not on that list.
We need to be on that list.
Okay, so if this has just passed, then it has not worked its way through the court too?
No, but this was just what the appeals backed up.
Actually, what was passed isn't exactly this verbiage. It's, it's, it's not it.
Well, there was two, so the State Board of Education did one, and then the State Department of Education did an opposite. So one took one side and one took the other side, and they both passed a resolution.
Okay.
Both in Ohio?
Yeah.
But what I'm looking for, the State Board of Education passes.
How do you do that, 'cause that would be conflicting.
Yeah.
You read our, our statutes, right, and you have some more dapper rules.
Oh, wow, typical.
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh, which one was that that you had, Michelle?
Just, why would you do that?
It was the State Board of Education passes controversial Title IX proposal. Ten, seven, one, approval. That would impact protections for the LGBTQIA plus students.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I don't know, this is on state news dot board, I don't know that uh entity, but they're saying that it, uh, Ohio Education Board passes controversial resolution against federal anti-discrimination policy. December thirteenth.
Yeah, so Thursday the thirteenth, that has not worked its way through the court system yet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I didn't think it had. I'm not even too good at this, it's like, where do we start?
I know. Well, you just keep going and going, I mean, we start with all this, it sounds like we need a definition, I mean, I hate defining any of it. Um, because it's just that, it's just this big long rabbit hole, and then every other little thing that comes up, we have to define that too, you know?
If we put it in a resolution, do we have to define it, or can we just say, there are these things?
Yeah, the resolution is sort of this, the statement of those things, just sort of like this was here, you know?
Yeah, it all falls under gender dysphoria, I mean, technically, this is a matter for health and medical people.
Right, right, and parents, yeah, that's, you know, um, but I do, the one thing we do hear from staff a lot of times too, and I'm trying to remember that, is.
And parents.
Sometimes they feel like they're between the rock and the hard place, because it's actually their job to educate, but then make sure that they're not stepping on any of this, you know? And a lot of times they want us to define, you know, tell them exactly what the board means, or, because.
In every building I've been in, all the conversations I have, nobody wants to go down this road or violate any parent rights.
They don't have direction. Right. Right.
But the hard part is, you know, a kid will say something, and then, I mean, they are trying to direct it back to the parents, and but then their kids wanna continue to talk about it, and so that's, I mean, they just feel like they're in a rock and art. So they just, then they're mute, 'cause they don't say anything, I mean, they're just like trying to put a stop to it, but, um.
Right.
You know, and it's about anything, I mean, it's, we keep doing this through the lens of transgender, or, you know, um, same-sex situations, but it's even hetero situ, I mean, you know, it's all uncomfortable.
Yeah.
They don't wanna delve in any of that.
Mm-hmm, and then there again, you know, we, unfortunately, we don't know everybody in the district on a personal level, you know, I'm sure there were. People in some of these other districts that were just shocked when they hear about, you know, so-and-so did this or that, you know, I mean, nobody, I think, expects it, you know? Um, to, to be a big, you know, expects it to be a big ordeal, or what have you, but I guess it does, does happen. I just don't think it's, I, I find no place of discussion or anything in the school, I just don't see that that's the proper setting to talk about any of this.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, there, there's, they're teachers, you know, they're not.
Yeah, they would rather those conversations are not being at home.
Yeah.
'Cause then the reality is, then you're forced to have to support, I mean, you're affirming or denying, and that's a hard place to be when it's a kid.
Right. Right, right, yeah.
So, and if they don't feel like it's their place, they don't wanna go there.
Ramona, your preference is to have a resolution on the issue?
Well, I think we can do both, I think we do need a resolution, because I think a resolution can be a little bit more clarifying, and I do think that there is some, um. You know, uh, statute language, well, I started a, a resolution, um. That can encompass this also, um, and I think it is the, uh. If I could find it, what the board actually always says about, you know, the parental rights, um, let me see if I can find it here.
I couldn't remember the language you used, Nate, but I put, um, in this policy under all of the categories, uh, gender identity is perceived by some as a person's inner sense. So gender expression is perceived by some.
Yep.
Sexual orientation is perceived by some.
I would add, or other after male or female, I know it's weird to add that, but some people think they're cats.
Right.
Yes.
Kind of like male or female, or other.
Yep, there's a high school in Coeur d'Alene that has a litter box. You didn't know that?
No, the district I moved out of in Washington had that.
What district was that?
Uh, Hockinson School District, it's outside of Vancouver, Washington.
Well, yeah, I came from King County, so it's like.
And then the shell, I would like to change the should to shall.
Progressive Central there in Washington State.
Yeah. I don't know where we are.
The last sentence.
Where CRT was huge, I mean, what they did to my daughter, oh.
Under, under the definition generated me.
Under the definition?
Yeah, so just further on the sentence, your cursory is currently on?
Okay.
Huh?
Okay.
Yes, they think they're cats.
And they get affirmed of their catness at school.
Got it.
You have to affirm their catness.
Yeah.
Where did you come from in Washington?
Uh, Auburn.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, my district is all about CRT.
What did you move out here?
Uh, you're a C.
Cathode ray tubes.
So I have been.
Can't hear CRT without thinking cathode ray tube.
Oh, yeah, I, I hear you.
And then just adding on there the following definitions are provided for policy clarity.
That's why we're here, that's why I'm here. I've researched everything.
Shall be, yeah, and then discussing, I think since we changed, uh, should to shall, then some of the words after that have to change to make the sense.
Down to everything.
Okay.
A proper grammar, any of its employees shall discuss, address, or educate.
We're not trying to go in any of that. You would be appalled at the board meetings I sat in on and publicly commented in back there.
I just sent you, uh, well, Michelle wrote down this.
That's part of why I moved here, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I think, both of us.
Yeah.
It's like banging your head against a wall.
Yeah, I just get mad that we even have to have the conversation, the conversation has no place in education.
I agree.
I agree. Right.
You know, it's not, but education has become this activist playground.
Oh, it's.
Hundred percent is, I mean, it's an important, it's a most important.
You know, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if they're far right, far left, far middle, far whatever, you know, everybody forgot why we were here, you know? Um, and it's, it's just become. You know, just, it's just so influenced by everything but education. And I do feel bad for a lot of the teachers, because I believe that there are a lot of teachers out there that are genuine, just wanna teach, but they are so bombarded too. With all this stuff that gets barked down from the feds, from the state, from, you know, their own district, from, you know, and they try and keep their job, you know?
Yep.
Right. Right.
I, I've talked to so many teachers, in fact, I just wrote an article about, um, the last couple of years of being the, the least, you know, they've lost so many people coming into the field. And, uh, teacher burnout is coming within five to ten years of the profession and they're leaving, and especially now, because of everything.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, it's all.
We had a community meeting today, and so they asked us what, what they could do to help, and what's people's morale, and I was like, this is, it's hard to be a teacher right now.
Yes, yeah, it's really hard.
It's really hard to be a teacher, 'cause you, I mean, on both sides, I mean.
Right.
You really, I, they feel the pressure of not, not being able to do anything right, it's just, it's hard.
Right, right, they have, you know, all the statutes, all the training, you know, they're, they're being mental health professionals, they're being, you know, um. Sped when maybe that's not what they wanted to be, you know, they're being counselors, they're being, you know, all these things, you know, nutritionists, you know. Teaching the parents how to parent, everything, but being able to just teach lessons, yeah.
Teach a whole class. Yeah.
Read a story, do your little grammar, some phonics, you know, maybe, maybe even have fun with your class and go throw a ball with them on the playground or something. I mean, they're just so burnt out, they, you know? They, they do have a hard job, like, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what did you update there, the following definitions?
Mm-hmm. Did you change anything in the transgender section where it says the person's sex assigned at birth? I would just personally cross out the signed at birth, nothing that's assigned.
Right.
Good point.
They fill in the blank on the verse, I don't know.
Right. Oh, in Ohio, I think they said, specifically say that sex is not arbitrarily assigned at birth, but rather identifies as an unchangeable fact. So, I agree.
I mean, you could put some vocabulary words in there that make it really explicit.
Exactly. I'm gonna get down to biology here.
You write a picture book, this is this, and this is that, no word spoken.
I do not wanna be the person who draws that picture, I'm just saying.
Yeah, these books, the books that they're bringing into the classroom, that's.
Yeah, some of the suggested curriculum, um, some of the suggested supplemental curriculum made me like, I don't know, more wary of like, teachers that might be bad actors, I don't know.
Right, are they bad actors or are they good actors?
Excellent question. It's the good actors you gotta worry about, right?
That's right.
All right, so I shared, it's a little long now, and I didn't, I haven't finished it yet, um, but that, um. You know, that, uh, resolution that I started, uh. I think part of this could get rid of some of the weariness, um, with the parents, I mean, outside of the fact that it is the law, and.
I do like that you titled it parents' rights.
Yep.
Oh, actually, that's really good.
Did you just?
Yep, I shared it, here, let me send it to you.
Okay.
Um. Let me, oh, you should already have, uh, access, that's why it wouldn't let me, go ahead, I'm sending it to you anyways.
Is it in the drive?
Yeah, but I'll send it, I sent it to you in the email.
Okay.
Yeah, and I didn't write the whole thing, I sort of springboarded, but then I put a bunch of stuff, um. So I talk about all of the statutes that, specifically the Parental Rights Act in the state of Idaho, but then also the, um. And all the statute that goes along with that, um, I talked about the curriculum committees and the parents' rights over curriculum.
You scroll down.
Um, and also, also the Idaho Parental Rights Act, I mentioned that, and I didn't finish delineate, delineating out, delineating out all of those things either.
You guys can ask.
Um, and then right here, um, I wanted to add, um, you know, everybody always talks about the opt-out, but really, we're an opt-in district, um. So I wanted to add some of that language here from the policy, from the Idaho code, from some statute, um, and then there, there's much more that can be added. Uh, and I think, because as I started working through it, I also think that, um, uh, some of this, um. Sex education and health and all that goes right back to the parents' rights, because that's what the statute says. So I think just even just a parental rights resolution covers sort of that whole basis, not that we don't need to do this, but then maybe we do.
But you could include in here some of the, like, our adoption process, our supplemental curriculum process, we're doing a, you know, the library process, like, I mean, it all is embedded in this.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Right, right, yeah.
'Cause it's, it's, it's parents' oversight.
Right. Yeah, 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 so right now, it's just sort of from the, yeah, from the perspective of, you know, here's what the law is, we uphold that law, we adhere to that law, we, we recognize it, that's the whole thing, and I think.
But I think to their point, we'd have to name that really specifically.
Right. Yeah, yeah, and I think the district is proving that track record now, but. I wanted to do one, um, some, sort of similar to Shay's, um, I would, his was written from more of a legislative first perspective, which is typically where a resolution is. So I would reword more of this to fit the local school district, um, with our. My thing is, this is it, I know we're defining and we have to define it, but we're still, our focus is education, yeah, we're not denying these things, it exists, and they need to be dealt with, and. Somebody's gotta address it, but that's not the business of the education apparatus.
Right, it's not ours.
Right.
Do you have a bathroom policy?
At this point, yeah.
Not yet. No. Yeah, I was wondering.
We've talked about it.
Well, no, 'cause I'm just reading through, 'cause a school district, and I'm trying to find the policy, in Texas, just pushed through a transgender ban, and I found it interesting, in some of their language. They have the policy set like, sports, students may play on teams of biological sex, of sa- of same biological sex, so they implement the policy by.
Right.
They don't come out and say all of this, they just. So they implement the policy by, they don't come out and say all of this, they just kind of say, yeah, you use the bathroom of your biological sex. You play on the sports team of your biological sex. And you can't deny biological sex.
No.
And that's what won that case is biological sex.
Okay.
And then that way you don't even have to say this. If you say everything is conducted, um,
I still think that.
According to biological sex.
I think this is great though of just spotlighting the district, like, I mean, even if the sexing wasn't and just really what we're doing specific to parents' rights and supporting parental rights, I think is super important.
Ramona, did you just write this up?
No, I do, I, I wrote a lot of it, yeah, but I didn't write all of it, no. I took a springboard. I found something that sort of, it's really hard to find anything on gender issues. What I did was I always go the anti, so I go find everything that they're for and then I just write the opposite and throw in all of the law that proves it, right? That's all a lawyer does is they all argue the same law. It's just whoever argues it better. Whoever convinces the jury that they're telling the truth. I mean, you know, so when they say, oh, but they cited a case, well, let me go pull my cases. It's like cite your source, you know, I mean. But in this instance, I mean, it is literally directly out of the statute, you know? So. So we can keep working on that too. There, they take a little bit more brain time. But I do think we probably need one of both, but we'll see with the board.
No, I agree. Well, the board's already said we want to move forward with a resolution on this.
Okay.
We voted on that.
Oh, yeah, you're right, huh? Yep.
I don't think it was a vote, it was a discussion, yeah.
On parents' rights or on the gender?
Both, both, yeah, yeah, both. That we need the resolution.
Yep.
Yeah, we talked specific to the lawyer helping with that, hoping that that was gonna
Yep, that's right, yeah, that's.
be a good foundation and then realized it was not, so, yeah. I think it's hard right now, so.
Yeah, and there is, um, since we're getting toward that sex ed thing, um, there is, uh, some programs within the state. I don't know if we have them in, I don't think we have them in Lakeland. Um, that one organization, that's all they do is they heavily focus on sex ed throughout the country. Um, so they do have a complete document on, uh, programs and curriculums used in the state that are funded from various sources and all that, but I don't, none of them sounded familiar to me. So I did want to look at that. It's the, uh, comprehensive sexuality education, so it's stopcse.org.
So D, this policy does have that little tidbit in there about the restrooms?
What's it? Stop, Ramona, stop.
Uh, stopcse. So comprehensive sexuality education.
That's what you could do. You could just take this whole entire policy and just say, student trips. In the case of overnight students, students will be assigned to sleeping rooms that are correspond to their biological sex. That's all you do. Take this entire document and change it to biological sex.
Yeah, and then on, uh, might be under the, uh, go to that cse maps up there.
And then you don't have to define anything.
And then the US, yep. Yeah, and then if you click on Idaho.
I can obviously say I've never seen anything like this before.
Yeah, none of them ring a bell to me, so this is, um, over to the left there in the resources, these are all the different, uh, things they have found within the state. And the gender agenda, that's why when also when I, uh, I thought about this when I was reading the, um, all of our definitions, I think, are fairly well-written, um, they do address some of that on here.
Yeah, Washington State adopted this.
Yeah.
With parents' permission.
Yep. They passed it, just the lawmakers, and then there were enough signatures on a petition to get it for a state vote, and then it passed.
And I was shocked.
Yeah, I think sometimes people don't understand what they're, because the, it's all in the words they use, right? It's all a language game, you know, and unfortunately, you know, we always judge things by our own experience, right? Like when I was in school, that's how you look at school, you know, or when they were in school or what, that's what they still see, you know, their favorite teacher, the fun times they had.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the way it was phrased was like, oh, well, why wouldn't you want comprehensive sex education for your kids? You know, it's biology.
Right, 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 yeah.
I think a lot of people are just completely unmoored from any fixed point of morality.
Oh, my lord. Yeah.
They're just, you know, whatever culture does, whatever culture's on you, it'll be whatever it says.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's disgusting.
There's all kinds of things out there. So where are we with our, um, I sort of got everybody, I feel like, down the rabbit hole.
I know.
With everything, because I have, I have a hard time separating it all because it all in my brain sort of is the same thing, you know, the parental rights and all this stuff that's found its way into education.
It's on purpose, it's by design.
Yeah. No, I know, it started a long time ago, um.
We have roughly 10 minutes left. Can we kind of just like recap and talk about what we're doing for, just because we're not gonna, yeah, so I feel like this is gonna be, this will take up the whole two hours in the next one.
Yeah.
So this, for your at-a-glance, I think it'll probably take both February meetings, don't you think?
Yeah.
Because we'll start playing around with some of these drafts, so that's her, uh, February at-a-glance. And then we have the four policies with the forms and the procedures. So actually it's five. That will go to the board meeting for February 13th. Is there anything else we're missing? I think this will take, between your resolution and the policy, this will take the whole month of February to get a draft going.
Yeah.
Did the board meeting change their Monday date now, Saturday day? Starting at six.
Can we get emails, can we have for these policies, so?
The gender man? Yeah.
The gender friend.
I probably saw that.
Uh, awesome, awesome. There's no way I can look at it. I might start working on it, outsiders.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully some kind of meeting.
Rosanna, can you send a PDF of Ramona's, also the, is that on the list?
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
The resolution should start.
Can we include all of those in that month at-a-glance so everybody can see? Don't you think that would be helpful?
Yep, but then they also want the PDF, so they have to create them. Are you okay, Ramona, with me sharing your resolution or?
Well, it's not finished, but yeah, I don't know how to, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, no great secret. Yeah, that's fine. But I mean, it's, it's bound to change because I'm not done with it either, but, yeah, that's fine. I was gonna send it to everybody, but I started to, because there was that one group email that you sent. But I didn't come around to it.
For clarification, our next meeting, are we doing five or are we doing six? Are we moving it to six from here on out?
Oh, for the policy meeting, is it all right with everybody or?
Yep.
Do whatever.
It's actually better for you.
Okay, me too, yeah, good, great. Yeah, that way I'm not so trying to get here.
So do we want to, um, just change that on the invite, uh, Rosanna?
Yeah.
To the whole team and just moving forward the next, because we're still doing it on the first and the third, right?
Wednesday.
So this is our last one for this month?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so then, and for February, we'll just switch it from six to eight on those two and just do it in the invite?
Yeah.
We also have to do treasurer, right? Do you have any treasurer coming in?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was something we really need to get done.
Yeah, yes. Do you think that's gonna take a long time?
I don't know, honestly.
Okay.
I don't think it will. We just need to make sure that her duties align with the statute.
And it's clear.
And it's clear. Does that need to be done before this stuff?
That's what I was thinking, is can we?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Because if that's more urgent, we could. Well, yes, it does.
Yeah, there is, um.
I'm gonna hand you guys these now, then, the treasurer one.
Oh, we should be able to get it done in the first hour of the next meeting.
Can you save those so that we, we will start the next meeting with that?
Yeah, do you guys want these printed or not?
I'll take it.
Do you guys?
Oh, yeah, I'll take it, so then we can just read it ahead, yeah.
And we can check the statute and just.
I'm hearing my phone's side, yeah.
So the one that just says full district is ISBA's coffee and then the one that says district is ASBR courage.
So the one that we were trying to find, um, speaking of the treasurer, was, uh, thirty-three, seven oh five under the activity funds.
Okay.
Was another one because it says the treasurer of the district shall provide accounting procedures for receipt of positive expenditure withdrawal of such monies, procedure for monthly reporting to the board of trustees of the transactions, assets, liabilities, fund balance for each such fund. And then it goes on for more, 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 more. So I think that was part of that one that we couldn't find at time that we had read. Um, so thirty-three, seven oh five is part of the treasurer's duties.
Oh, yeah. If you, if you look up my ongoing list of, of, um, for the, for the trustees, the trustees duties.
Yep.
If you do a search on there for treasurer, it has those ones. Yeah, it's in the seven hundreds, yeah.
You said thirty-three, seven oh five, correct.
I finalized the trustees.
What's the title of it?
Uh, activity funds?
No, I'm barely on.
It's just activities.
Yep, yep.
And there's like.
It's the one that talks about, like, we just, whoever's the treasurer's.
It's, it's. It's gonna take two years.
I added it to the policy just so that it's there as a go-to.
Because there's so many duties.
Well, because I have to read through all of them to find duties.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm reading all of them, let you see.
There's much, much more than lots of people believe there are.
Well, are we ready to stop recording?
I would say yes, we could stop recording.
Yeah, it's about dead.